I'm gonna call the working session to order at six o'clock. Do what? We gotta, we gotta, she's online. Yeah, yeah. Barb, you're here, right?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, there's three of us. Okay. We've got two board members coming in late. Okay. So the, number two is the discussion of tonight's agenda.
It's pretty straightforward, this one is.
It's gonna be a short agenda.
It's a short agenda, so I, there's, and I don't think there's anything of any confusion on it.
Okay, it's pretty easy, alright. Number three's construction update for the Bath County Middle School and High School.
I'll let, uh, I'll just be brief on the high school, we're pretty much, uh, commissioning agent will be there tomorrow to check off his list. And, uh, then we did the water test. And we, we could not find any leaks, uh, on the area that the contractor, where the contractor had did the repair work. So, if there's water that's continuing to, uh, enter the school some way, then there's must be another location we haven't found. I don't know this past, uh, I know Anthony had told them to give him a call if they observed any water, and I don't know this past Friday. Tim, do you know of any water that? So, I think we're, I think we're good, but, um, I, I know water did enter the building after the work was completed, but...
David, which location are you talking about? The cafeteria?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes. Well, kitchen, yeah.
So, Tim, are you saying it's, it has been fixed, or? So, did, did we think it was still leaking, and then now it's just not, and we haven't done anything?
Uh, whatever, whatever, yeah, we, we've done it, but whatever it happens, we're gonna make the first crossover.
Yeah.
And, uh, we've got a fire brick wall, both saturated, we've got water in on ceiling. It's like I'm saying, it's just a big blackout. And, uh, we tried to make it happen again, and we pretended, uh, after every big storm and so on and so forth. I know what happened, but it didn't happen, happen to me.
Okay. Ms. Brandenburg, have you had any complaints in the kitchen with the, with the water coming through or anything? Okay.
Okay. So, I'll, the only other piece to ask about is regarding the Chenot Building. I think last month, we had a discussion about if it was appropriate for us to have the contractor to disable the ADA actuator buttons at the front of the Chenot Building, and I know that there was gonna be some conversations about whether that's needed or not. Knowing that, um, it's present, it functions, it just kinda conflicts with the release of the lock that the receptionist would have to trigger. Um, I don't know if Ms. Brandenburg, if you feel like we should go ahead and have the contractor disable those buttons, or if you think it's okay? Disable them, okay. Okay. So, yes, well, hearing that, we'll definitely have the contractor disable it for the Chenot Building. That way, there's no longer an issue with the timing of that lock malfunctioning with the lock of the receptionist desk versus someone just coming up and hitting the button expecting the door to open up, because clearly you want the school secured. So, beyond that, everything that David mentioned is pointing towards us closing out both the high school and the Chenot Building. I believe the BG fours will be ready for the board maybe next month, but maybe, okay. So, we'll have documents to close out the high school first in December. We'll then have to do every HBC one for the LEVAC project to move some of the money over to help pay for the remainder balance of the change order for the asphalt work.
Jonathan?
Yes.
On disabling those doors, uh, if we had a need later, could we re-enable them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it would just need an electrician to come in and to...
I was making sure.
Yeah, definitely can be. Um, so, moving over to the, uh, oh, the high school, in terms of like the graphics. So, I believe Dr. Milton has maybe shared some of the updated color options, or two iterations from the comments we've received. And, um, I definitely have a version on my computer, I can come and show you all, uh, the three of you present here, but I think, Ms. Razor, you've seen it in an email. Ultimately, I just need to give whichever preference we want to proceed with to the supplier, so they can tell us when they can get it fabricated and when we can get it installed. Uh, but the, the main nuances is that we kinda updated the red to be like the very true real red. Um, and then there's a option that shows that same thing, but with a white background, just to help give more contrast. But those are the two subtle changes that are applied to each of the graphics. But we can...
Yes, I, I sent my choice to Dr. Milton.
Okay. Okay. So, um, you know, I'm sure after the, the meeting, you know, we can have something in, in an email saying, you know, we wanna go with a certain one. And then I'll be able to get an ETA on when we can get samples here, so we can make sure that the, the colors are perfect the way they should be. And then a, uh, the final step of when they can get installed. So, for the middle school, the brief update we have there is that, um, we've discussed the electrical service of the building being the, the major need for us to address first. So, Pax Walker has gotten the documents to do an early equipment package for the switchgear, so that way you can get here soon at the front of the project, uh, next year. And so, with that, we would be looking at bidding the rest of the project later, once we have HBC approval. And right now, the timeframe for approval from the state or the plan reviewer is around the, the 10th of December. As soon as that happens, we can go and bid out the rest of the project. But at least know that we have the switchgear, um, getting to bid ASAP, so that way we have a realistic number for you all to be aware of at the December board meeting, which I believe is the 15th of December. Um, and then beyond that...
John, share the, uh, offer from Owensboro as well.
Oh, yes.
Kinda explain on that, please.
Yes, so, um, because we knew that the switchgear was a time-sensitive thing, uh, CMTA has a great relationship with Owensboro, and so they reached out to the district to see if there was a way for them to lend, um, a switchgear to Bath County. And they said that they could, and it was a switchgear that they used one time for a project that they have already completed. But that is available as another backup plan for the district to take advantage of, so that there's no, um, stall time between doing any improvements to the middle school project without a brand-new switchgear being present on site. So, while you will have an early bid package in December for the estimate for the switchgear, that just means that it likely would arrive on site around April of 2026. And, um, to make up any, uh, lag for additional work from the start of the year to April, there is a option for Owensboro to lend Bath County their transform, their switchgear. At no additional cost to the district, but just at a good relationship with having fellow KSPMA districts who need the switchgear.
The only thing we would have a cost associated with that is the transportation of it to here, and then back to Owensboro when it finished. And that would make sure that if we did have lag time on the switchgear, uh, that they could do a lot of the work, then we would have the temporary and be able to go ahead and operate, and then when we got the rest of the materials, then we could go ahead and make an easy switch.
Correct. Um, and then I know that the city is still working on the, the flow tests with their water tanks, and so that's another factor that if we get approval from the state to go ahead and bid, we're still gonna need that flow test from the city to be performed, which we've been informed that they should be doing that this week, if not next week. But definitely, I'm thinking that by the 10th, surely it should be done, but we're at the mercy of the city for the flow test to be completed. But, there are no action items for either the high school or the middle school, just giving you updates of where we are for some of those items. Okay, I'll come back later, uh, between this, uh, working session and before the start of the real session to show you the graphics, in case you wanna see a better color version for the high school graphics.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Alright. Number four's gonna be the discussion of the municipal adversary agreement and bonding capacity update with Lincoln.
Hi, my name is Lincoln Thiner with RSA Advisors. Glad to be here, first of all. The municipal advisory agreement for your consideration essentially is a regulatory checkbox that I've gotta do anytime we, um, kinda start a, start a construction project and leading up to the bond sale. It essentially says that we will always act in the best interest of the district and have an obligation to immediately disclose any conflicts of interest and that sort of thing. If, if there's any questions, I think it's in your packet, I've got a copy if not, but again, it's, it's basically just, uh, a document that says we all, we have an obligation to act in your best interests at all times and to immediately disclose any conflicts of interest.
Do we have any conflicts of interest?
No.
Okay.
No.
So, we just need to sign off on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a mo- motion to, yeah. So, in working session, we're not doing motions, right? We're just, got it, okay. I'm gonna take some time, since we are in working session, if you guys will allow me, uh, ten minutes to kinda go into your bonding capacity, I wanna, I want everyone to leave very comfortable with where they're at and understand, uh, how I get to my numbers. And so, I'm gonna use the same presentation, I've essentially used my twenty-year career, it works. Um, and that is to describe your borrowing capacity, exactly similar to, um, how you would decide how much of a house you could borrow at your local bank. And so, on this handout that each of you should have, you know, if you pull up a seat at the bank and, and ask your loan officer how big, how big a house you can afford, they're gonna ask you to tell them all about your current debts, and then they're gonna wanna see your W2s and, you know, tell us about your income streams. So, on page one, each column here represents, I call them, in the school finance world, their bond issues, let's think of them as mortgages. Um, so these, these would be the principal plus interest payments that are currently outstanding on your books for projects in the past. And if you jump to the far right-hand column I, you'll see that the, the sum by fiscal year in the first four years or so is approximately one million, six hundred and fifty thousand. And then as you look farther out in, in time, as more debt gets paid off, of course, you owe less. I've come to associate that with my own personal finances, probably most of yours. You know, if you, if you have two car payments, for example, until one of them pays off, your, your debt load that you're carrying is always the heaviest, sort of in the next two or three years. Whether you're a ci- city, county, every school district in the state, if you've got debt on your books, it's fair to say that the heaviest amount of debt you're carrying is always going to be in quote-unquote "those" next few years. Um, just sort of, sort of a universal norm, and I'll kinda tie back into that. Also, just keep in mind, as interest rates, you see the Fed, there's talk backwards and forth, whether they're gonna lower interest rates, whether they're not, some of that depends on inflation, et cetera, et cetera. Just know that from my standpoint, the easiest phone call for me ever to make would be to call Brittany or Dr. Milton and say, hey, just out of the blue, guess what, I've been, I've been watching your Series 2013 bonds that you already have on your books, and if you get me on the board agenda, I'll come present that you could refinance and save some money. Can't do that right now, but just know that I'm always monitoring all of your outstanding debt for that possibility, because that, again, that's a, that's an easy phone call to make to give some good news. So, without knowing anything else, on the surface, that's kind of a lot to swallow, one million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of debt per year. And so, how are you currently able to make those payments, let alone have additional borrowing capacity? And we'll dig into that on page two, your revenue sources. Every district in the state has a requirement to dedicate five cents of your taxing effort into the building fund. And so, my footnote down at the bottom of page two, I'm using the most recent assessed property values avail- available on KDE's website of seven hundred and fifty-two million. Column B says that when you set aside five cents for every one hundred dollars of assessed property value, that generates three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So, that's monies that are coming from yourselves, from your tax base, that are heavily restricted for building fund purposes. So, no ta- no textbooks, no salaries, just, just building fund. Column C, here in Bath County, of course, you've got the one that was recall- a recallable nickel, so that generates an additional revenue stream of three hundred and seventy-six thousand. And you'll note that I go out twenty years in time. A home mortgage would be for thirty years, yes, there are some schools in the state who have issued a twenty-five-year bonded, uh, bond. If it's a major capstone project, like a new Woodford County High School, they issued a thirty-year term. It's a little bit like financing a truck, just because the dealer will let you borrow for twelve years or whatever, doesn't mean you're gonna be paying a lot more interest over time. And so, that's why, as I'm here tonight presenting you a conservative snapshot, I'm only looking out twenty years. And so, along those, along those conservative lines, I also wanna point out that I'm not factoring in any property value growth. So, as you look at the revenue that you're getting from yourselves, that five cents for every one hundred dollars of assessed property value, in column B, as you go down those twenty years, I am not projecting, just to be safe. Obviously, whether we have a recession, depression, whatever happens in the next twenty years, if we could reconvene here twenty years from now, I would, I would hope that through whatever the dips in the economy between now and then, that your property value would certainly be higher than it is today. Column D, capital outlay. This is revenue that comes into your district from the state, which is simply one hundred dollars for every, um, unit of average daily attendance. And then you'll notice, because ADA fluctuates quite a bit, KDE tells, again, I'm conservative by nature, and I'm gonna point out different ways that I have been conservative. There's those of us in the industry that maybe not so much, and so KDE puts some guardrails on, on us and says that for projection purposes, we can only use eighty percent of your capital outlay dollars, just because we know that that's flexible. Columns E and F. FSPK stands for the Facilities Support Program of Kentucky. I'll spend just a little bit of time on, on that and get in the weeds just, just slightly. You know, you hear the term equitable quite a bit in the school business, you know, how can your students be funded most equitably compared to, um, Campbell County, or Boone County, Fayette County? Well, as it relates to bricks and mortar and, and your, your construction dollars, every two years, Jay Ritter at KDE calculates what the statewide average... If, if you, if you could, so, we know how your local nickels calculated, just five cents per one hundred dollars of your assessed property value. If you took the entire state and added up the assessed prop- every piece of taxable property, and, you know, you get that multi-billion dollar number, and find out what the, what that nickel would be, and divide it by the number of students to get a per pupil number. That number happens to be six hundred and five dollars per student statewide. And so, if, if in Bath County, column B, if your three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars that you raise from yourselves does not come out to be at least six hundred and five dollars per student, then column E, I'm associating column B and column E together. The state comes in with column E and says, well, Bath County, you're a rural district, and because you're a rural district, your property values are, you know, you don't have that big, heavy industrial tax base like Campbell County does. So, the state gives you six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars to add to the three hundred and seventy-six thousand you're contributing from yourselves. Those two numbers added together equal six hundred and five dollars per student. Now, if you were Campbell County, their tax base is already above the threshold, and they wouldn't receive any equal- equalization dollars in column E. So, if column B and column E are sort of tied together, column C and column F are tied together. For your second nickel, it also gets equalized with a second stream of revenue from the state of an additional six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. If we sum up those revenue sources, column G shows that you're at roughly two point two million dollars each fiscal year. In column H, I just subtract out the debt that we already identified on page one that you have. And then in column I, it shows the net building fund dollars that would be available today for principal and interest payments on a loan or on a bond issue. The one other revenue, revenue source that I haven't mentioned in column J comes from the School Facilities Construction Commission. That's a separate agency that the General Assembly assigns a pot of money to, typically every two years. The SFCC, there's no secret to it, they, they literally open up a spreadsheet, they go to each district's facility plan. Very last page of your facility plan, at the bottom, there's a big bold number, it says total amount of unmet need. They plug that in for each district, assign a ratio, and then they take the anywhere from forty to a hundred million dollars that the General Assembly gives the SFCC, and they hand it out in the form of offers of assistance on a prorata basis, depending on your, your unmet need versus the rest of the state. All together then in column K, column K would be the net dollars available for principal and interest payments. Now, let me stop, stop there just for a second. I go to many districts who would see the numbers in column K that I'm, that I'm, on, on my sheet of paper shows that it is available for you to make principal and interest payments. However, let's say that you've been making a bus payment, or, there's a very, very limited amount of items that you can, again, no textbooks, no salaries. But, you do have this fiscal year twenty-six, for example. I'm on page two, column K, fiscal year twenty-six. There's roughly five hundred thousand dollars that's gonna be left over for fiscal year twenty-six that is... I, I don't know if it has been earmarked for, it could be earmarked for things like insurance, buses, bus payments, ener- energy conservation payments, such like that. So, I'm very aware that a district may come back to me and say, okay, well, column K, it shows that I've got, you know, on your, on your paper, you're saying we've got five hundred thousand dollars available, but why don't you, why don't you run me a scenario where we hold back a hundred thousand dollars and don't, and don't, uh, spend everything? I'm very glad to do that, but for tonight's presentation, I thought my job would be to share what your maximum borrowing capacity would be. And so, on page three, sort of the bottom line to tie everything together. Page three, column C. Column C would be the principal payments on hypothetical twelve million, three hundred thousand dollar bond issue. Column B, uh, would be the interest rates, which are much higher than what they would be if we sold bonds today. And again, that's just because I don't anticipate that we would be selling bonds for the middle school until a few months from now, and that's just me almost being conservative to a fault, I'll, I'll admit, you know, I, I don't wanna have to come back and, and, uh, the world just gets crazier every time we turn on the TV, it seems like, and I, I try to compensate for that by, uh, using some very, very conservative interest rates in case, in case rates should jump higher. But it would be true, i- if you, if you, if you issued the full twelve million, three hundred thousand, and if at the time you issued them, the, the interest rates really were as high as what I'm using, then your interest payments would, um, would be shown in column E. And if you jump to the far right-hand column K, yeah, essentially, it would be accurate if you said, well, we don't have anything left over. But, I wanna jump back to that equitable equalization formula. Every two years, that does get recalculated. And so, as long as there are districts throughout the state whose property values are growing a lot faster than yours, Fayette County, Campbell County, when KDE recalculates how much per student it takes statewide to maintain that equitable level, you've got these more property-rich districts pulling that threshold up. And so, even if you, even if you bonded yourself all the way out with the, if we sold bonds today, it would be thirteen million. I'm sharing twelve-three, just to be conservative. Even if you bonded that all the way out, every year that, every year that goes forward, you're paying off debt. Every two years that that calculation gets, gets recalculated, and you've got those other property-rich districts pulling the average up, more revenue coming in here. Every two years that the General Assembly gives money to the School Facilities Construction Commission, they offer a new offer of assistance. I think my, my, my comment would be that any district is ever only bonded out just for a short period of time. It's always an evolving number. Not encouraging that, just sharing where you're at. Glad to look at any scenarios. If you said, I have to have sixteen million, how do I get there? Have to have fifteen million, how do I get there? I'm gonna show you a scenario how to get there. On the other hand, you tell me to hold back a hundred and fifty thousand a year, I'm gonna tell you what that number would be. Boards all the time ask at this point, well, would you advise us to bond all the way out? I, I can tell you districts do it all day long, but I can't give, I can't give you a comfort level until you, until a board has actually seen the numbers grow. until a board has actually seen the numbers grow, spend it and grow, spend it and grow. I think the takeaway is just know that this 12.3 is very conservative at this point in time. A footnote on page four. I do anticipate an additional 1.6 that would become available July 1, '26 as a result of additional revenue from the recalculation of the equalization and just rolling one year forward on the calendar. I know that was a lot of information, a lot of information.
Thank you, Lincoln. Do you have anybody having questions?
Good.
So you think that we're being very conservative as a school system, having the 12 million and bonding its power?
Absolutely. There are districts that, yes, there certainly are districts who that number would be well below 2 million. You guys have, you're in a very conservative spot to take on... I mean, the reason I hesitate is because I'm very comfortable with your 12 million or even 13 million. The reason I hesitate, I respect boards that are conservative like myself, but I also know there's a handful out there who really do go to the mat all the way. Not encouraging that, but...
We have a budget up that we're anticipating that's going to cost us quite a bit of money. We have 7 million that was given to us free money, and then the rest of it we're going to apply, so we'll be using about 5, maybe a little more.
Yeah. On page four, there's two footnotes there, 7-1-26 and again, 7-1-28. 7-1-28 is going to be here right around the corner. So I'm showing essentially $5 million of more bonding capacity coming online that I'm not even talking about today. That would just come from rolling the calendar forward two years.
So we would have, in two years, we would have 17 million?
Yes. If you didn't spend anything until then, you would have easily 17 million, 7-1-28. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's far enough out in time. Keep in mind, whenever I put footnotes out like that, the farther out I go, the more conservative that I have to be. So I would actually hope those numbers are better.
Lincoln, where did you see that 17 million at?
I'm taking the 12,300 that we went over, and then there's two footnotes down below the box that show an additional increase.
Oh, I see it, okay.
That's just summing up those three.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
All right, discussion of consent items. Do you have any of those? All right. Any discussion? Do we need to talk about the JAG program?
Do you want to talk about the school adult milk increase?
Okay, whatever you...
Yes. Well, one point on the consent items, AL's school adult milk increase. We've had an increase for both on recommendation from the Fed over food service that we've had to increase the meal prices for breakfast and for lunch for adults. And if we didn't do that, we were going to have to reimburse the federal back. So that's just what that point is, that it's required to do it.
Okay. So what are we increasing the adult milk to?
Do you remember? 505 or 5, 5.25?
What is it right now? Okay, so it went up 50 cents. Okay. All right, that's good. Discussion of policy 8.1345, AP.21, Title I, expenditures of funds. We're going to do the second reading tonight. Is there any questions on that? Okay. Discussion of the 2026-27 school calendar options.
I gave you all the printouts of the two options that the calendar committee came up with. They had an option A and an option B, and really the only difference in the option A and option B were the teacher planning days. We had an option where teacher planning day started a little bit earlier. Gave the teachers a three-day weekend with the August 21st, and it did not have a teacher planning day at the end of the year before the closing day. Option B started them on a Monday, and there was a teacher planning day at the end. A big change from this year is we took the teacher planning day on January the 4th out. That was the first day that teachers come back from break. We did that because last year it just ended up being a mess and a day that we had to add on to the end of the year because of snow. And with the winter that were projected, the fewer days that we can have that possibly have to be that way, the better. That was really the only, the only big changes and the only difference in A and B. I sent it out for a staff vote, and 68% of them wanted option B. They did not want to come back on the 13th, they would rather just start it out on a Monday, so... I can answer any questions you all have about those calendars. We had two meetings with the calendar committee.
Does anybody have any questions about?
So the only difference really then, Liz, is that they're just going to start on the 17th?
Yep.
Okay.
Either way, the kids are coming on the 26th.
Yeah.
It's really just, it came down to teachers. It was odd the way the days fell this year, and there just weren't a whole lot of options for... It was important for the, the calendar committee found it was really important to be done on the 21st because of how it fell last year. We wanted every option we could to be done before Memorial Day, to get graduation in if we could. It's a very good chance that we'll have to go into that next week if we have any snow at all, but... Dr. Melton also sat in on the calendar committee meetings, and we all felt like that was a pretty good option to also keep our week-long fall break. We could get a few more days in if we could do a three-day fall break, but our staff did not prefer that. We also have press and court days that we always have to look into that other districts don't have. And we have to consider being able to get our buses through there.
Yeah, and that has grown tremendously, and they do start on Monday. So I don't see a bus getting through there.
Yeah, I feel like those would be difficult attendance days too, if we did have school.
Yeah. No, I like option B. I think it looks good. Thank you, Liz. All right, discussion of CES turn lane agreement.
I was contacted by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, and they have made an offer to buy the right-of-way for $27,250. That's about $17,000 for the 2-point, the 0-2-9-2 acres, and plus $10,000 for damages to be able to put in the turning lane, and also that will turn into crossroads and also a turning lane coming both directions, basically. A center lane and a turning lane if you're going towards Morehead. So that's kind of the behind it. They've made the offer, and that's what the amount is. But it would increase the safety of turning there and getting on and off the road.
Oh, yeah. That's a hard turn, and you can't see very well down the road, especially when there's fog.
That's definitely...
Say that again, Mark.
I said, "That's def..." Can you not hear me?
Oh, that's definite. Is that what you said?
It's definitely needed.
Thank you. We heard you that time. All right.
And it was on the original plan, and just when crossroads was designed, and it just never got in. And Tim and I started the conversation with Transportation Cabinet about five years ago, and lo and behold, they just showed up in my office one day and said, here's an offer. So we really, it will help us a lot out there.
We kind of lucked out on that. All right, is there anything on other business number nine? Does anybody have anything? All right, then I'll hold this meeting adjourned.
What time is it?
6:41.
And we also have Nolan McNabb.
Thank you, motion made by Ashley.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Discussion of possible action on tonight's agenda?
Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion made by Eric.
I'll second.
Second by Barb, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance and silent devotion.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four, student spotlight. Bath County Middle School.
Good evening everyone, um, tonight we're going to be recognizing our middle school cross-country runners. All of the students that we're recognizing tonight are eighth, or I'm sorry, are seventh graders. And although they're still in middle school, they've been competing as part of the high school cross-country team. And each time that they race, they line up against athletes who are often much older and they never let that deter them. Their dedication and hard work helped both our boys and girls teams qualify for state this year. These athletes shine both on and off the course and many are involved in multiple activities. And several of these students were inducted into our junior beta just last Friday. Um, we are incredibly proud of their accomplishments and grateful for the positive way that they represent Bath County Middle School and we're excited to recognize them tonight. And I do believe that we only have a few who've made it, um, so I'm just going to go ahead and recognize those students. If, when I call your name, if you don't mind, please come up and get your certificate. And our first one is Mamie McCarty. And we also have Nolan McNabb. We do have three other students to recognize, but they are not with us tonight. We have Zoe Roberts. We also have Mackenzie Hefner and Maya McNabb. Thank you.
Thank you Misty. Number five, Dr. Milton, will take care of the communication and instructional update from Dr. Bailey.
Uh, my communication to the board, uh... Oh, oh, I didn't know what to say.
I didn't see it, thank you. I'm sorry about that, I didn't even see that.
I apologize for that, so we got that taken care of and took the picture, I didn't even notice. Uh, so, my communication to the board, I wanted to update on the meetings that I attended this month. Uh, went to the KDE Local Accountability, uh, meeting on Wednesday, November 5th. Attended the Student Success Summit in Lexington on Monday, November 17th. Was at the Montgomery County Area Technology Center Steering Committee on Tuesday, the eighteenth. Uh, the KDC Board Meeting on Wednesday, the nineteenth. And the KSA Design Team Board Meeting in Louisville on Thursday, the twentieth and Friday, the twenty-first. And then we had our Bath County District Administrators Meeting today. Uh, I'd like to commend all of our schools on their wonderful Veterans Day programs throughout the district. Each ceremony was very respectful and touching. Uh, we, and Dr. Bailey's getting ready to fill in on some of its information, but we had some concerns uh, with our elementary reading special, uh, programs curriculum. So we called a meeting of our elementary reading specialists on Friday, November 14th and had a great day of working with them uh, and to address some issues that we felt that we had. Uh, then, uh, we've worked on the district title program monitoring that our district has been selected for. KDE monitoring, visit, monitoring visit this March, and there's a lot to that and we're working on that. Uh, and I'm looking at developing a clear policy on facilities request, fundraiser request and uh, Bath County High School auditorium usage. We get some confusion there, uh, with some forms and things, so, and some steps that we need to follow. And then, uh, we're in the process of starting the process of looking at budgets and staffing allocations that will begin the process in January. And then of course, uh, Dr. Bailey will also go through our KSA results analysis and the decisions that we're going to try to make in the coming days. And that is my communication with the board. Uh, under that, we also have personnel actions, uh, which we have some hires, new hires, resignations, extra service and transfers as part of that. Uh, and we have three fundraisers, two from, uh, Bath County Middle School and one from Crossroads, uh, in the packet. And, uh, under a, there's the proclamation, the November Homeless Awareness Month. If the Honorable Mayor would, uh, go ahead and go through that, do you have that proclamation on the table here? So, go away with it, Mayor Hunt.
Thank you, Dr. Milton. During my fifteen years serving as mayor, I've signed hundreds of proclamations, but none quite like this one I did at the last council meeting. I guess growing up and going to school here in Bath County, I just didn't think of homelessness very much. Sometimes when I think of homeless, I think of park benches and back in alleys and big cities and so on. But, uh, since I signed this proclamation, uh, I've done a lot of research on this and I've found that there's a different definition of homelessness today. And I have a much better understanding now of what homelessness means and the prevalence of it now in our county. The Bath County school system is also very keenly aware, as I've gathered, of this situation. And you're doing a great job identifying and helping those students that fall under this category. In my research, I discovered that all counties in the state have this problem. Bath County Schools, I know in the, the chart I saw, it showed about ninety-two in K through twelve that were classified as homeless. And I think I spoke with Kay a little earlier, I think that number is slightly higher than that. But somewhere in the hundred range or a little over that, that's too many. And after I finally read as to what it means to be homeless, then I understood that. And it means a lot more to me. Our nation woke up to this problem back in two thousand and seven and Congress passed a resolution recognizing November as National Homelessness Awareness Month to build awareness of the issue of youth homelessness, including its causes and potential solutions and highlight the needs of the children experiencing homelessness and intensifying the efforts to prevent and end homelessness. At our last city council meeting, I signed the proclamation that you have before you. At this time, I'd like to read it and make it official part of our meeting tonight. At this time, I'd like to read it and make it official part of our meeting tonight. Whereas November is recognized as Homelessness Awareness Month across the United States, to recognize the numerous reasons people become homeless, the challenges faced by adults, young adults, youth, and families experiencing homelessness, and to mobilize community-wide efforts toward lasting solutions. And whereas the city of Oingsville recognizes that homelessness impacts individuals and families from all walks of life, and whereas research shows that criminalizing homelessness worsens the crisis and deepens existing racial inequalities and systemic disparities. Now, therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Oingsville, hereby proclaim November of 2025 as Homelessness Awareness Month, and we might add, it's a youth homeless, youth homelessness awareness month. And I encourage all the city of Oingsville residents and Bath County residents, citizens, partners, and businesses to recognize the need for and to commit to building and sustaining a coordinated and equity-driven continuum of care that meets the complex needs of people experiencing homelessness rooted in dignity, equity, and hope. And again, I want to thank the Bath County School System for what you're doing for our young people, not only educating them, but also taking care of them in many other ways as well. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. Thank you for all you do for our county's youth, and may every one of you have a happy, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
And so, I just want to give you a little bit more information about how our district meets homeless needs throughout the county. In 2024, Dr. Emily Barber wrote a grant, the McKinney Vento Grant. And it's a very difficult grant to earn and win, and she's a very excellent grant writer, and so we were awarded that grant. And so, we have that grant for three years. We had it for the 2024-25 school year, 25-26, and we'll have it again next year, 26-27. And for each of those years, we were awarded $218,000, $218,750. So, that's quite a bit of money that we can use toward these children that are experiencing this. And I want to add, too, it's not just living without a home. In Bath County, our numbers are affected by families that are doubled up together. We have lots of families in our county that one family or another could not afford the bills, and so they live together, and they share the bills in that. Of course, the family that owns the home and has the keys to the home, they're not considered homeless. They're not counted in our numbers, only that, only the family that's been invited in to stay with them. We do have some children that live in, last year, we had a child in a shelter. We had some in campers. And then another category that we've added several children to this year from is substandard housing. If windows are broken, if floors are not, not the best in the home, or if they're missing, if it has infestation of lots of different things, that's considered inadequate housing. And so, we have quite a few kids in that situation as well, too, that we help. So, with that grant money, we were able to hire a liaison, a student liaison. I was the first liaison. Now, we have added Ms. Sherri Kissick. We work together in this grant initiative. We are both part-time girls. Neither of us work this full-time. If we had a full-time liaison, it would just take a lot more money out of the grant to pay things. So, Ms. Kissick and I just piggyback, piggyback off each other, and we work together. She takes care of families. I take care of families, and we do it on a part-time basis to try to have as much money as we can for students. We have 116 kids, and I added another little girl today, so it's, it's around 117, between 117 and 127 students that we are servicing right now. We have 24 at Crossroads. We have 30 at OES.
The middle school.
Can't see it. Oh, sorry.
We share a lot, and we're sharing glasses tonight.
I don't know if we have the exact number now.
We have approximately 17 at the middle school and 43 at the high school that we service privately, very, very privately. And I'm going to let Ms. Kissick tell you about all the things that we are doing and the things that we have bought with that grant money.
Thank you all. You know, I am retired, but for many, many years, I worked with families who I wish I had known more. We were way under identified for very many years of what it truly means to be homeless. And I always say, if, if somebody can tell you tomorrow that you have to leave from the situation you're living in, then you're definitely homeless. And we do have a whole lot of families living in that situation. Through the grant, we have been able to purchase a vehicle that is used to transport homeless students. It's also equipped with security camera, and that just enhances the security of the whole situation. We always try to have two people, you know, if you're transporting a child, but in some situations, you just, you can't make that work. So, having that camera is just a great asset to the system. Some kids, like, we have a family right now that's in Mount Sterling, and they're living with their four children. And I know you've seen it, they're on, I think that's Maysville, but they redid that hotel years ago and made it into like little apartments. So, there's two families living in one of those little apartments. And they're, and we're required, if, if a family is homeless and they move out of our district, we have to provide transportation or reimbursement for them to stay in our school system. And when you think about the trauma that kids go through and being homeless in itself, being able to stay intact with their friends and, and the teachers that they're familiar with is just a crucial piece. So, with the car, or sometimes we just reimburse mileage. That provides a better situation for those children. This year, we, we had a day, the, the guys at the maintenance caught my laundromat, but we do have a washer and dryer, and according to them, I've already tore up one. But we have a new one starting today, and praise be. When Gay was talking about, you know, that we're, we're part-time, but our day is not a normal school day. A lot of times, it's weekends or it's evenings. I laugh because years ago, I don't know if you knew Tommy Mays, but Dawn and I were really good friends, and for whatever reason, he called me the wash woman. Growing up, and I have filled that, that name. I wash clothes a lot, so. If I could get a little mobile one, you know, that I could just pull around somewhere, I think that'd be better. But anyway, we're doing a lot of laundry. We have been able to do after-school tutoring programs, and that's geared towards accommodating the needs of students experiencing homelessness and what other needs they may have. Supporting identified families in the absence of SNAP. I know we've all seen just the huge impact, especially here when you think about Thanksgiving and the holiday season coming up and those families. Some families receive so little in their SNAP benefits, but then to have that pooled as their means of being able to provide food for their families. So, we were able to partner with Save-A-Lot and do vouchers, and we did $100 a child, which was more than what some had in their SNAP benefits to begin with. And the biggest blessing of this is when you are able to help these families, and they just, they're just so overwhelmed with it and so thankful that we do have this grant. And my biggest fear is what happens after next year, you know? Because we have been able, just this evening when I was cooking supper, I had a parent, she messaged me, and she just said, you know, I don't have washing powders. I don't have any way to clean my floors and those things, and is there anything that? And the student told her, he said, I bet they can help us with that, and, and we can. So, tomorrow, I'll deliver those to her. And so, it just gives a little relief in the hard times that we're having for families. This past, last month, actually, we were able to send six personnel to the national conference. And I was lucky enough to be one of those to go this year, and Gay went last year. But we've kind of tried to rotate it, and we're required to attend that national conference, but it was in Dallas, Texas. And our state coordinator was named the national coordinator for the year. And so, you know, it comes with a lot of pride. He takes a lot of pride in his position, and he has a heart for this. And he and Gay talk quite frequently about our questions. So, we, the money has been used to hire the two of us, and we're constantly contacting families. We get referrals from the schools. A lot of things come through Frisky, or it may even come from a teacher. The biggest thing I took away from conference this time is just how much we have to still, you know, at the beginning of the year, we really reach out and, and give a good insight in as to how these kids qualify. But we, we've got to keep doing that all year long because people's situations change. And I know when I was counselor, I would always say after every break, I have 20 go out and 20 come in, you know, of transient students who are just hopping counties to counties. Gay really takes a big part in meeting with all the seniors and helping them with FAFSA. And if you've ever had a child go through and try to get ready for college, you know what a nightmare that thing is. So, she's a big help with that. We've, we've trained everyone as far as school personnel, as, as to what things they need to look for and how kids qualify, bus drivers, the cooks, everyone that we can touch base with. And so, we ask you, you know, sometimes you know of situations, and if you do, it never hurts just to give us that name. And then we try to do it in a very confidential way. And most usually, I never even mention the word homeless because sometimes that just puts up red flags with people because a lot of people worry about what other things could get involved. And, you know, many families are scared of social services and things like that. But I always say, most, most families are trying to do the best they can. It's just they, they haven't been given the easiest road. And so, we're very blessed with this grant, and if we could be lucky enough to receive it again, it would be amazing. So, thank you all for your time. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. That was very good. And this will be the instructional update presentation with Dr. Bailey.
All right, guys. Good evening. Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to share with you a few items and try to make this as, as quick as possible and not get into the, the details too much. But we're going to begin with our KSA highlights. And Ms. Barb, I apologize that you don't have this. I don't have a presentation. It's printouts. But I'll email you these items so that you can reference those as well.
Thanks, Sean.
You're welcome. The first one is the ledger-sized paper that you have that says Bath County KSA Highlights. Want to share the data with you guys. It's been made public. And we've shared out and celebrated with our schools the scores from last year. We're getting in third grade students begin taking Summit of Kentucky assessments. And we'll start with Bath County High School. As you see there, BCHS made many areas of growth and maintained their rating of yellow overall. There are five different ratings, red, orange, yellow, green, and blue. And yellow is, is a great rating. So, yellow overall, they had a very intentional focus on math last year, and it paid off because they had an increase of 7.9 points. That is a increase significantly, is what the state of Kentucky calls that, a blue rating in growth and, in math and reading. And their graduation status and post-readiness status continues to be great, and they have a green rating in that. So, Bath County High School has a lot to be proud of. They are on an upward trajectory and doing great things. So, congratulations to Ms. Brandon Berg and her school. Next, we'll look at the middle school. Bath County Middle School saw huge gains in all areas. Last year, they were a orange-rated school in '23, '24, and they jumped up drastically to a green-rated school. That is huge, a huge celebration. Their math scores and reading scores increased significantly, 8.6 point increase. If you look at other schools in the state of Kentucky, this is huge, right? Increases of one or two points are about what you see. If you see anything above five, that's great. And where they were the 8.6 increase in reading and math. Not only that, social studies, science, and writing scores increased significantly, an 8.1 increase resulting in the blue change rating. Their combined writing scores were extremely impressive, one of the highest in the state. And they had a blue combined score overall, too, not just a growth score, but an overall score as well. Bath County Middle School is rated in the 76th percentile of all schools in the state of Kentucky. They're, they're in the 76th percentile, which is fantastic. Let's give a hand for Bath County Middle School. Way to go. Crossroads Elementary School continued their steady success and maintained yellow overall school rating. Strong scores in science that really tipped the bar there. They achieved a green rating in social studies, science, and writing. Students, student strong perception of CES. CES had a climate and safety rating of a high green as well. So, intentional focus on culture and overall growth, steady. Staying at yellow is hard. Most schools will see a up and down, up and down, but to stay steady is, is something to brag about. So, Crossroads Elementary School, congratulations to them on their yellow rating overall. Let's give them a hand as well. And finally, Oingsville Elementary School remains steady. They achieved a yellow overall school rating as well. And for the fourth consecutive year, four straight years in a row, the percentage of students scoring proficient and distinguished at Oingsville Elementary School increased in reading. Four consecutive years. That is persistence. That persistent growth is what you look for. If you see ups and downs, ups and downs, there's a systemic problem. But when you have steady systemic growth, that means the system is in place for continuation of that to happen. For the second year in a row as well, the highest social studies scores, far exceeding the district and state average at OES. So, a lot to celebrate at every one of our schools at KSA data coming out. So, let's give a hand for all of our schools. As we know, KSA is just a snapshot in time, but it does indicate a picture of some things that are going on and happening. All it takes is a bad day or a great day for scores to, to change in any way. So, there's the KSA highlights. Do you have any questions about KSA data that they'd like to ask? Okay? You can find detailed information on KYSchoolReportCard.com, and you can find Bath County's page, and it has all the breakdown of the data, breakdown of, of different groupings of students and all the details there for the past few years. Those are our KSA highlights. I do want to share a couple more items with you that have been some areas of focus and areas that we've addressed. Some of the things that we like to do is to always grow, always look to improve, and a couple of the things that we've been focusing on. The first one is something that's been implemented for a little bit now is our Bath County Vocabulary Improvement Plan. You'll see the Packet, Bath County Vocabulary Improvement Plan. Just want to let you look at this at your own time. I'm not going to go through all of it, but at the beginning of the year, we took our eye-ready assessment. And the beginning of the year, every student in the state of Kentucky is required to take a screener assessment. This screener gives them, it, it places them essentially with their skills, their levels, so that we can determine if they need extra supports or not and track that growth throughout their educational career. With that, when we took our eye-ready assessment, we did notice an alarming number of 43% of our students scoring two or more grade levels behind in vocabulary. Vocabulary is very important for all content areas. In fact, if you turn to this inside of the front page, the second paragraph says, "It's not just one more thing. The research shows that over 85% of all academic achievement gaps are tied directly to differences in vocabulary knowledge." If our students don't know the words, they can't read the passages. They can't understand anything they're reading. So, them knowing vocabulary and us intentionally doing that was something that we jumped on. So them knowing vocabulary and us intentionally doing that was something that we jumped on. We had a team that gathered together and prepared a plan. And we developed this vocabulary improvement plan that has started. Every school has done some amazing creative things within their school, words of the day, hidden words that they're using, intentional training of their teachers to teach vocabulary. Teachers have shifted so many things to teach vocabulary specifically. We've honed in on this so that not only are we improving our reading instruction, we're improving all of our content areas because vocabulary impacts every content area so that we can grow our students. We know that our students are not exposed to the vocabulary that some other students in higher socioeconomic areas may be. And so, we want to intentionally fill that gap for them at the school. That's a vocabulary plan. You can look through that. There is a specific timeline as well that we've begun and started implementing. And kudos to our leadership for implementing that and taking that to the next level there. And then the next item is what Dr. Melton referred to a bit ago is some work that we've done on addressing a new curriculum that we've implemented, some potential barriers that have come up. In the state of Kentucky, in 2022, Senate Bill 9 required that every school adopted a high quality instructional resource in English and language arts. And Kentucky's gave a list of here are the ones that meet those areas. And so, a few years ago, two years ago, we put a team together and identified and researched all the programs. And we landed on with the input of many teachers and leaders of Benchmark Advance of our program. And this is a program that is high in rigor and it's going to share this in this letter I'm going to share with you. But there are high expectations and with that, it keeps the level of rigor that the standards are asking. But in this letter that we've put together, we've identified some barriers that are there. We knew that some parents had voiced some concerns and we listened to what those parents said. We brought our team together that included teacher leaders from both elementary schools that were identified by the principals. We brought principals in and our reading specialists in and instructional directors in and had a meeting that discussed every grade level of this program, every potential barrier. Now that we're in the second year of adopting this program, every potential barrier that could become a learning gap and what are we doing to address those barriers? And so, having the expert teachers in there, shared the ideas, shared the strategies that they're using and shared what they've seen that has worked and what they've seen that we need to adjust. And if you notice on the front page, there's a picture there and that's a roadmap that they have created from K all the way to five, that they've identified the barriers, the gaps, and here are the bridges to those gaps that we can put in place. That workday was a workday that was extremely beneficial in many ways. Not only did we identify barriers, we identified great things about this program and how we can capitalize on what's great and how we can improve some areas of deficiency in this and utilize other resources as well. And so, with that in our letter that we have put together to address these issues because not only we want to address any potential issues, we want to communicate at a very high level what we are doing in the schools and how your students are learning to read and communicating that. Laying this out, you'll see some things that the teachers said that are great about the program on the second page. Benchmark Advance, it's a great, it's great at teaching social studies and science and embedding that while teaching reading. Fantastic intervention resources, all those things that they really love. We shared that as well because this curriculum is, as with every curriculum, has some barriers. There is no perfect curriculum. If there was, then everybody would purchase that and we'd just roll on. But these are national curriculums based on Common Core and then we hone in based on our needs for our students. Benchmark Advance has also been adopted by other high performing districts. Fayette County has adopted this program and they utilize this in all of their schools, all of their elementary schools. Rockcastle County, Lawrence County, and Shelby County are four schools, school districts that utilize this program. And we've leaned on them for how they're addressing these gaps and how they are capitalizing on the strengths of this program. So Benchmark Advance, there are some districts that are there. Not only that, we shared to our parents that we have highly trained teachers in foundational reading through the Letters Program. Our teachers volunteered and did a two-year intensive program on how to teach literacy at the foundational level that Kentucky provided through the Senate Bill 9 grant. And it paid for a two-year intensive instruction called Letters. We have so many teachers trained in this program and they're using those professional learning opportunities to pour into this as well. And we have great teachers that we've leaned on through that. We then share with our parents what Benchmark Advance is in a way that shares with them that we know that students are struggling when they first come to this program. This program is designed for this big educational key lingo called productive struggle. Is that students aren't going to come here and just breeze through it, but productive struggle creates learning opportunities and that's when real growth happens. So they're exposed to things that are hard from the beginning. They're exposed to on-grade level texts in the very beginning. And so, we're providing these scaffolds and supports that are helping them access the grade level text from the beginning. And we explain that in this letter in detail. Like I said, this team's come together and we discussed it at our administrative meeting today. And I'm not going to read it to you, but you can, you can look through that to see how we have addressed those needs. And then we break down what the pillars of reading are because this program addresses every one of those pillars, from phonemic awareness to phonics to fluency, the vocabulary and comprehension with oral language, background knowledge, and writing. It is not just throwing a book in front of them. Teaching a child to read is, in a sense, a miracle from them learning to just speak a few years prior to reading text independently in a few years' time. It's a, it is just, it's an art and a science at the same time. What this does though is it's, this letter will address the science of reading, how the brain works and how the brain learns to read. And it lays it all out there for our parents. I know this seems like a lot, but we went as detailed as possible because there were some concerns that have been brought up and not only from parents, but we want to make sure our teachers are very well aware of how to best use this program. We have expert teachers that could take this and not think about it because they've taught for years and teach it to a high level. But our brand new teachers are the one that we want to give every single resource we can provide to address those gaps as well. This letter serves for both our parents and our teachers on how we're using our reading curriculum to teach foundational reading, K through five. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Sean, how many teachers were on the committee to pick out the plan? Did you take them both from Crossroads and OES?
When we picked out the program?
Yeah.
So that was Ms. Klein. This was before me, whenever we selected the program.
So it's a couple of years.
It's been, yeah. This is our second, so we implemented it last year. We purchased it the year before.
Okay.
So, but I can, I mean, I was, I was representing OES at that time.
Yeah.
So there were three to four, I think maybe one representative from each grade level for four or five from each school that selected this program. And at the beginning, there was a bit of a divide. It's like with a lot of districts, several of our primary teachers wanted a program that was different than what our intermediate teachers wanted. And so, there was, there was a balance there. And one way or another, there were going to be preferable selection for either one of them. And I think at that time, they, I don't know what the overall vote was, but Ms. Evans, Ms. Klein probably would have had that data if I asked them, but I didn't think about it. I didn't think that question would have come up. But yeah, it was divided, but now we're, we selected this and we're very confident in this because we've seen great growth. We've seen scores go up in reading just from one year. But with, as this research says, with any implementation, it takes four to seven years for the implementation of any new system or program to truly show its effect. And first year is always hard with any new program. That's when all the gaps come up.
That's right.
And then we try to address them and be real quick about it. And I appreciate Dr. Melton, as he, you know, showing urgency in this, is like, let's not hold off and wait until next year. Let's do it now so that we can address these gaps now and move forward immediately. And that's what our team did. It's been impressive.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sean?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Well, it's not really a question. I think we really need to stay on top of this because I'm hearing so many parents that, especially first graders, they are really struggling with this. And we really need to stay on top of it.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. And I'll speak to that. At the end of kindergarten to the beginning of first grade, there's a huge jump. From the end of first grade to the second grade, there's this jump from rigor from a first grade level to a second grade level standard, from a kindergarten level to a first grade level. And so, what this program does is with all the other programs, to meet the marks of what KDE expects for that all the texts within the programs to be at the grade level, they don't, they don't have a progression of, well, this is beginning of second grade, so we'll make it like early second grade and easy to blend and to grow into and progress into. They start with end of grade level text from the very beginning. This hard, high level that they give our students. And what we do is not just say, read this, but we provide scaffolds, is what it's called. We provide these supports that first, the teachers are reading it aloud to them and they're walking through it with them reading it aloud. And then they'll gradually release after Unit 3, Unit 4, to let students start to read it independently. And so, us providing these scaffolds and supports, we expose them from the very beginning to on-grade level, not almost grade level, which a lot of programs that do not meet the HQIR method will kind of stagger and progress up to. It starts with end of grade level from beginning, on-grade level from beginning. And so, what we've talked about is building these scaffolds. And what this letter kind of speaks toward is building these scaffolds so that we ensure that our teachers are holding the hands of our students through this and then slowly letting go when they know they're ready. And that's what we know that some teachers were doing naturally and some of our newer teachers that didn't know to do that aren't doing because they're teaching to the fidelity of the program, black and white. And now, we've put this in place to say, okay, new teachers or teachers that don't know, here's how you do it. Here's when you start letting go and you read. Of course, a teacher knows their student better than anyone. They can let some students read independently before others because some are progressing more. And so, it's, that's the art and the science of teaching balanced together. So, yeah, you are, you are very right with that. It is a big jump. And there's a lot of difficulty that sees that a kid was soaring at the end of kindergarten and then at the beginning of first grade, it's like boom, hits you in the face. And so, we need to prepare our teachers and our parents at the very beginning that it's going to be bigger text than they're ever used to, but we're working towards that. And you're not to be mastered in the beginning of the school year. Mastery comes towards the end. And so, we're exposing this text and building them to mastery by the end of the year, they're going to have mastered all those grade level standards because they've been exposed to them all year long. And I know that's kind of a shift in the past that we're just kind of slowly, gradually, but we're keeping that bar high and we're working scaffold to have our students lifted up to. Because the last thing we want to do is lower that bar and love our babies to failure. Well, they're not ready for that and so, we're not going to make it hard for them anymore. And that doesn't give them the growth that they could potentially do because we're lowering that ceiling for them. And that's what the state of Kentucky's really pushed, that rigor and keeping that rigor high. And that's what this program does and every, every HQIR does, is keeps that rigor, that level of rigor high and expects us to push to them. Now, that is, for me as an educator, that sounds easy for me to say, but in me, as I put myself in a parent's shoes, that's hard because my baby's going to struggle for a while and I'm going to have to provide them supports and the teacher's going to have to provide them supports. It's a bit of a shift, but this program has a high level of rigor. And if we can get our difficulty, if we can get our kids to that, we're pushing them far beyond what we've ever pushed them before. We truly are.
And I want to commend Dr. Bailey and the group of reading specialists that come together. This is my 30th year in education and I've never seen a group solve more and address more issues in a period of a day than I've ever seen in any group. So I want to commend you and that group that came together that worked on this. I mean, they were, they were writing things on Post-it pads on the walls and they were talking literacy and reading strategy and it was absolutely amazing. And they're to be commended on the work that they've done. So I think it's in the right hands. I think we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Ms. Barb, I do hear you. You're exactly right. We will absolutely stay on this and this won't be something we just throw out and say, good luck. We're going to, we're going to stay on top of this because this is not just the now problem. This is a problem that could grow into the future into something astronomical if we don't hone it in. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Discussion and possible action approving the following items. 7A, October 27, 2025 minutes, October financial statement, claims, superintendent expenditures, superintendents, October 2025 working calendar, travel, use of facility, fundraiser, grant, review of all monthly financial reports of all funds, paid bills through November 30, 2025, and the school adult meal increase. Do I have a motion to approve items 6A through 61?
I make a motion, is it 6A? I thought 7A.
I'm sorry, it is 7A.
7A through 7L.
I second.
Thank you. Motion made by Eric, second by Barb. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 8-1 is public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We do not have any public comments.
Thank you. Number nine, discussion and possible action to approve the municipal adversary service agreement with RSA Advisors LLC.
I make that motion?
I'll second.
Motion made by Eric, second by Barb. Discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Discussion and possible action on the second reading of the policy 08.13451, AP.21, Title 1, expenditures of funds.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Eric, second by Kim. Any discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion and possible action on approving the 2026-27 calendar, school calendar. We need to, we need to pick one, don't we? Option B. Okay. So do we want to make a motion to approve Option B?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. All right. So we're going to make a motion to approve Option B of the 2026-27 school calendar. Motion made by Eric, second by Barb. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Discussion and possible action to accept the conveyance agreement for the construction of a turn lane at Crossroads Elementary School.
I make a motion, we accept that.
Motion made by Eric.
I second.
Second by Barb. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve renewal of Amtech fire alarm monitoring for Crossroads Elementary School. Motion made by Ashley.
I'll second.
Second by Barb. Any discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn at 7:49.
Second.
Ashley made the motion. Eric second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.